I called the word of this regular meeting of Richmond Bourne Education on June 24th of 2019 at 7:01. If we could all stand safe and pledge allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Permission statement, Angela?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in global community.
Thank you. Roll call, Angela.
Kristen's absent with notice. Sarah?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
And I am present. You have one.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and take out number eight Board of Education Student Rec Report and renumber everything from there.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I am looking forward to approval for the consent agenda.
I motion to accept the recommendation of superintendent and approve that consent agenda as presented in the document.
Support. Moved and supported. Any discussion?
We just have one higher as far as Camp Richmond Summer Program, Catherine Merritt. She will be a counselor starting with us on July 29th when we begin our portion of the camp.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have public comment, a portion of the meeting where people in the audience can come up and address the board. You have three minutes to speak. This is not a question and answer period. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? If you want to call back.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Ranger. I'm the president of the Richmond Education Association. Before you, for consideration this evening, is a tentative agreement between the Board of Education and the Richmond Education Association. Our membership had the opportunity to vote on this agreement and unanimously ratified the TA. And I would thank all of you on the board for the direction you gave. I know you gave a lot of hours in closed session and hours spent on this. I thank Mr. Walmsley, Mrs. Shad, and Robert Uwer, along with the members of my team for their collaboration and dedication. I also want to say, and I want to say this very sincerely, it was a very positive bargaining experience, and I look forward to continuing this positive relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? All right, moving on. We have a closed session. I'm looking for a motion. First, we went to section 8B of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. I knew that the Board of Education wrote to close session for the purpose of a student discipline hearing for student 12, 10, 18. Support. Okay, is there any discussion? Jessica?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
And I vote aye. We're going into closed session, and we will be back out to vote.
I wish I had news to tell you. I am very concerned. The House bill that they introduced on their budget basically removes another $500,000 or $500 million out of the school aid fund to reallocate for roads. So, that is money that was earmarked for schools that they're now redirecting again. So, we will watch it throughout the summer. I know you're going to be forced to approve a budget tonight by law, and we're making the assumption right now we have no increase. So, I think it's a good assumption. We had a great end of the school year. I know our last meeting was right the day after the school ended, but I don't think we had a lot. It was uneventful. We have a lot to be proud of. The preliminary scores that are out, they're not publicly released yet for the high school, for the SAT, but I can tell you our high school students and staff rocked it. I don't say rocked it very often, but they some significant gains in that 11th grade. So, they, when they are released, they have a lot to be proud of, significantly over the county and state average.
That's huge.
So, but more to come. Just a quick update on the fourth grade move. Today, the cabinets were installed in the fourth grade classrooms. They really look nice. So, the custodians will be waxing the floors Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. We will be moving the stuff from the fourth grade over to the middle school next week. The playground equipment is in other than two pieces, which they're going to be putting in this weekend. There's mulch out there. There's people out there playing.
For the first day.
Jamie and I here were the other day, and I actually went outside and played on the equipment for a little bit just to get some fresh air. So, it was, it's actually nice. So, I know it's going to be used by the community as well as our middle school students. So, other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Next is items of interest from the board. Sorry to put you off to an meeting today.
Well, just like Brian said, with the end of the year, I think it was a fantastic year. Just kudos to the administration, to all the teachers and staff, you know, for making the 18, 19 school year great for all of our kids. Just looking back, it was a great year. Thank you, everyone, for all their hard work.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have some action items. First one is approval of requests for unpaid leave of absence.
Last week, we had Mrs. Secretary in the Special Education Department presented a request for unpaid leave of absence. I would recommend the approval. There's plenty of time that we can adjust this, and her position doesn't directly deal with students. So, we have some flexibility on her position. That's my recommendation.
Okay. Is there a sample resolution?
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the employee's request for an unpaid leave of absence from October 7th through October 15th, 2019, as presented and outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have approval of athletic field scoreboard advertisement.
Well, last week, Mr. Reinhardt presented on the scoreboard, there's a white panel at the bottom, and the original intent of that was TIF was upfronting the money of the scoreboard and then was going to seek some sponsorships, if you will, if that's the correct term, from some local service agent organization. That didn't pan out. So, having that space there, Mr. Reinhardt came to me with an idea about using that space to raise money for athletics. And I asked Mr. Reinhardt to be here tonight if there's any questions regarding it. But it was my recommendation that we begin this process, and then we can reevaluate it after a year to see how it's doing and so forth, and if we need to change any rates and so forth. But that would be my recommendation.
Sample resolution.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent, approve a two-year contract to expire on, oh, my goodness.
No, wrong, yeah, I'm sorry, guys.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent or designated seller advertisement space on the athletic field scoreboard with one of the spaces designated for the city of Richmond tax improvement, finance authority, TIF at no charge, as outlined in the attached documentation. Furthermore, the board delegates the screening and approval of all such advertisements on the scoreboard to superintendent or designated.
Support. Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt.
All right, next we have approval of the master agreement between Richmond Community Schools and the MEA Local One Richmond Education Association.
In your packet, we were able to reach a tentative agreement, as you heard from Mrs. Ranger when I reported to you previously. The two-year contract goes through August 31st of 2021. You'll see in the contract, or excuse me, in your backup, the contract is straight through languages. Some of the language changes do not have a financial impact. This is within the parameters that the board had set for me. I would like to echo what Mrs. Ranger said. It was many hours, a lot of conversations back and forth, and we did a smaller group this time rather than the full bargaining. It allowed us to have really open and honest conversations and dialogue, and it was actually very productive. This contract does have a wage and benefit opener. Part of that is we don't know what the state's doing, and so we're trying to, which, excuse me, kind of benefit over, a wage opener and three things from each side. And we will begin that once we have the audit, so we can see where our final numbers are. Hopefully, by November, we will have a per pupil foundation allowance, so we can see for that year to a contract. I think it's a very good contract. It does help, it incentivizes from our angle, from the district's angle, to try to minimize the disruption in education, trying to incentivize people from not using certain days so that they can stay in the classroom. Because there's nothing better than the actual classroom teacher. A sub, we have good subs, but there's nothing that can be better than that classroom teacher. With that, I will, I'm more than happy to go through the different articles if the board would like, or just recommend the approval of the two-year contract.
Sample resolution.
Before we do that, since technically when you abstain from a vote, we can't make comment during the motion. So, as everyone knows, the Snyder administration deemed that I'm unable to vote for the contract because I have a conflict of interests. I have a relative who is a teacher, even though it does not impact me financially anyway. So, I won't get on my soapbox on how ridiculous that is. But because I can't say anything, we have the motion. I am excited that we are able to do this, have this contract with the teachers, so that we can, we can move forward doing other things that we've got going on right now in the district. Thank you.
Laura? Looking for a motion?
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve a two-year contract to expire on August 31st, 2021, between Richmond Community Schools and MEA Local One Richmond Education Association, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Just thank everybody for all their hard work. I mean, it's, it's not an easy thing to do, and as both Mr. Walmsley and Mrs. Ranger said, it was a pleasant experience and very productive. So, thank you, everyone.
I'd also like to say thank you for all the time, Brian, that you put in, also REA, just coming together. It's very good news to hear that it was pleasant, and I think this is a really good step in the right direction. So, thank you for everybody for all the hard work that you guys put into it. Okay, I'm going to do a roll call. Jessica?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
I vote aye, and Margaret, you are abstaining, yes. Okay, motion passes. All right, next, we have a student discipline hearing. Looking for a motion?
I motion, following a closed session hearing, the board votes to reinstate student 121018 consistent with the attached documentation.
Support. Is there any discussion?
The attached documentation will be the resolution from that date of the hearing.
Okay, Margaret?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Next, we have our second student discipline hearing.
I motion that following closed session hearing, the board votes to reinstate student 032519B consistent with the attached documentation.
Support. Any discussion? Margaret?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Next, we have the approval of the 2018 millage tax request.
Tonight, earlier tonight, during the budget hearing meeting at 6:30, you were presented, Kamie Shad presented the millage tax request. This is the starting point that we, millage rate we're going to request, which determines our dollars. So, I would respectfully request that the board approve the attached millage tax request.
Sample resolution.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the 2018 millage tax request L-4029, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have approval of the fiscal year 2018 general fund final budget and the fiscal year 2020 general fund original budget.
I motion, we don't need to explain, we just did it, right?
Yep.
Okay. I motion, move it along. I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the fiscal year 2019 general fund final budget amendment and the fiscal year 2020 general fund original budget, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Okay, is there any discussion?
Thank you, Brian and Tammy.
Yeah, thank you, guys, for everything. A lot of work goes into that, so thank you. All right, elbows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have approval of the fiscal year 2018 debt fund final budget and fiscal year 2020 debt fund original budget.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the fiscal year 2019 debt fund final budget amendment and the fiscal year 2020 debt fund original budget, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the approval of the 2019 food service fund final budget and the 2020 food service fund original budget.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the fiscal year 2019 food service fund final budget amendment and the fiscal year 2020 food service fund original budget, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, approval of the fiscal year 2020 student school activity fund original budget.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the fiscal year 2020 student slash school activity fund original budget, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next up, we have approval of the state aid note loan cash flow borrowing.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the resolution authorizing issuance of notes in anticipation of state school aid for up to $1.4 million through the Michigan Finance Authority State Aid Note Program, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Okay, any discussion?
Can I just make one point on this one?
Yes.
If you are listening out there, please call your legislators. We do not get a state aid payment for the 1920 school year, for July, August, or September. Our first one comes in October. So, we're starting the year. So, that is why this is essential, that we have this cash flow to meet payroll and so forth. Please call your legislator to make sure they are doing the right thing for public schools.
Okay, I'll do a roll call. Margaret?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Okay, approval of the 2019 school, district school improvement plan.
This is a revised, excuse me, a revised plan. It's a similar plan from last year. We updated the procedures and the strategies as we moved forward. We had to make some changes in our plans as the middle school become now the Title I building. It, again, focuses on the four cores that we are measuring, English, Science, Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. So, I would ask that the board, the district school board approve the district school improvement plan for submission. This one has to be submitted by June 30th, where the individual buildings have until September 1st. So, those detailed plans will come to you in August for the building space.
Looking for a motion?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the district school improvement plan, as presented in the attached documentation, and authorize the superintendent to submit the district school improvement plan to the Michigan Department of Education, as required by law.
Support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, we have the approval of exempt and non-union employee hourly rate and salary.
Before you is the individuals who are not part of any bargaining unit, with the exclusion of myself, because I don't fall into this category that's done in December when you guys reviewed my contract. But it's central office. This list is a little longer than last year because we had, the bus drivers, if you recall, when we approved the budget last year, we're still part of our collective bargaining agreement. They are no longer part of a bargaining groups that are considered, I don't like the term, but they're considered an at-will employee. We have phenomenal bus drivers, so I don't know if they're the ones that would be going. But the recommendation is for increases for these individuals comparable to what other individuals have received throughout the organization.
Brian?
Yes.
On the last page, the online alternative education coordinator, should it be proposed 1920 rate like all the rest of them? Because it says 17, 18, and then it says 18, 19 proposed.
I apologize, yes. And that rate is not an increase, you still know it's not a particular one, because that's an open position. So, we would keep it at the current rate, because we'd be hiring a new individual for that. So, I apologize. Yes, that proposed should be 1920, and it'd be 18, 19 for the existing rate.
I have another question.
Yes.
On the list that you have here, where you list them all?
Yes.
There were a few I noticed are missing, but they're on the spreadsheet. So, does it include them?
Can you give me an example of one?
Laura Athenbacher, I didn't see her on these, but she is listed on the spreadsheet. Like the last few in the preschool on the spreadsheet were not listed by any.
So, I would, again, I apologize, I would look at the spreadsheet for those individuals. These are all the individuals in the organization or positions in the organization. We may have, we have an opening. So, Laura, the GSRP teacher and the GSRP lead, no, she's the lead, the associate teacher, would be the ones that would be listed for the same pay rate increases as the other ones. So, I apologize. Thali Hyson would be one of them that's on there. She's the during-the-day childcare. Elise Athenbacher, and so forth.
Okay, so everyone on the spreadsheet?
Everyone on the spreadsheet, for some reason, I don't know. Why did it go on here? So. Make a correction now.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, looking for a motion?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the salary and hourly rate pay increases for central office exempt and non-union employees for the 1920 school years, presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hold the roll call. Margaret?
Aye.
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 Jessica?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion passes. Okay, next up, we have approval of the 2019-20 MHSAA membership resolution.
MHSAA stands for the Michigan High School Athletic Association. Every year, the board must pass a resolution to abide by the rules and regulations in order for our teams to participate in MHSAA-sponsored events. So, this is an annual activity we do every June for the upcoming schoolers. So, I would recommend that the board pass the resolution. It does require the, I believe Jamie's got the document filled in, the board secretary to sign the resolution, so that we can send it off to the MHSAA, saying that we will commit and abide by the rules.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the Michigan High School Athletic Association membership resolution for the 2019-20 school year, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next up, we have approval of the preventative maintenance and web CTRL support agreements.
The preventative maintenance and the web control support, the preventative maintenance, for the last three years, we've contracted with Metro Controls. They come out on a regular basis and do all the maintenance on our event system, not only the new ones that were put in with the last bomb, but also the existing one that we're trying to maintain and keep going. The web control system is the automated system that allows us to log in remotely. In order to keep the latest version, we have to do a yearly increase. With this agreement, if there's any repairs that are done, we get a discounted rate, as well as the parts they order, as a discounted rate, which has, in some of the cases, saved us a lot of money by this, by having this agreement. They also monitor our systems from their remote site in Clinton Township, as well as many of the employees. You know Dennis, who's constantly, he lives right down the street. Dennis has come in on a weekend when we've had an event because there's a problem, and it's part of the agreement to make sure our systems are operating, so.
Okay, looking for a motion?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve a contract for $49,340 with Metro Controls Incorporated for preventative maintenance agreement and web CTRL support agreement, for which funding from the 2019-20 general fund is authorized, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, Sherry?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Next up, we have approval of contract with AIS for heavy operating equipment course.
Every year, in the budget, we have budgeted for the next three items already for the cost of, for the AIS program, the TV production, the EMT. So, the resolution before you authorized me to sit down and enter into a contract within a budget that you've approved. For the AIS, we are planning on having two sections, two two-hour sections, a zero first hour and a second, third hour. We have, I believe, nine students from our MEA scheduled to attend that program, as well as we have a couple students from New Haven who joined the program this year.
Looking for a motion?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement with AIS for the 2019, or 2019-20 school year, to offer heavy operating equipment course, for which funding from the 2019-20 general fund is authorized and outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have approval of the contract with the City of Richmond for the television and broadcast media course.
Similar as the last one, it's an agreement to continue the TV production course.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract for shared services with City of Richmond for television and broadcasting media course, for which funding from the 2019-20 general fund is authorized, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have approval of contract with Richmond Lennox Amortory Services for the EMT course.
Well, some of the only change from this year, from the current year to next year, is the EMT will go to a two-hour course, where students will complete it after one year, rather than have to take two years over the course. Looking at that, students, the enrollment dropped in that second year, because students also had to take other courses. So, we felt this was the best way to, if you will, get the biggest bang for your buck from a student scheduling perspective.
Do we know how many students we have signed up, right?
I believe we have 14 students in this class for going into next year.
That's great. I'm looking for a motion?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract for shared services with the Richmond Lennox Amortory Service for Emergency Medical Technician Course, for which funding from the 2019-20 general fund is authorized, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we have approval of application for preliminary qualification.
Last week, we held a pre-bond hearing. There were two minor changes, but the state treasurer basically passed the pre-qualification hearing. So, the final document is before you. The resolution that's in the board's packet is what is on this page one of the actual document, right on the inside cover. That's the document that has to be signed, and then we have to overnight that to the attorney. This will sit in the hands of the state treasurer for approximately 30 days. By July 24th, they've asked it to be returned. Based on our preliminary meeting, I do not believe that there will be any hiccups from the state department. So, once we get the approval of this application, then the last step before we go to an election would be the board would authorize the election ballot language. In your packet, you will also have the election ballot language that was discussed with the state treasurer. There was a recommendation by PFM Financial to add that it's a 1.5 increase rather than focusing. It's actually a 2.45 mil for the whole. focusing, it's actually a 2.45 mil for the whole bond, but it's a 1.45 increase over what people are currently paying, so it was just a clarifying, so. And then finally, the last item that you have in your packet is, there's a letter from Tammy to the state treasurer, Mrs. Densmore, regarding what we have left on the bond that's scheduled to be paid over the summer and in the fall, as we replace one-to-one technology, so that bond will be pretty much zeroed out pretty soon.
Okay, looking for a motion?
I motion, as outlined in the attached documentation, to certify that the Board of Education of Richmond Community Schools has taken the following action at a regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Education on June 24, 2019. One, resolve to apply for preliminary qualification of bonds by the state treasurer for the purpose of financing the school construction description in this application. Two, that said application is presented to the state treasurer for action prior to the official action of the Board of Education, calling the election on said bond issue. Three, resolve that this Board of Education will present a final qualification application to the state treasurer for qualification of their bonds, after this bond issue has been approved by the electors of said district. Four, read this application and approve all statements and representations contained herein, as true to the best knowledge and belief of the Board of Education. Five, authorize the secretary of the Board of Education to sign the attached preliminary application, and submit this document to the state treasurer for review and approval.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. Any discussion?
All right, last thing I would like to say is thanks to the team that's working on this. Board member Quasito was part of the conversation, it was about an hour-long conversation, the team that we had, putting this together from French's Aug and PFM and Tru, did an outstanding job getting it all together, so I appreciate their hard work.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll call, Margaret?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sherri?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion passes. We are adjourned at 8:00.